Welcome to the Commissioners Meeting. It's 10:09. Our first order of business will to accept any public comments. Is there any public comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve our minutes from our last meeting last week. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from October 1st.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right. We do have, Natalie had just let me know this via the chat here on Blue Jeans, that we do have an item that we had submitted for approval that we do need to add to the agenda. And Natalie, if you could, I'm just seeing if the text is here for it. Yes. So this would be, we would be adding this under our non-personnel items as item B3. And this is an item through, I'm just looking at the text here. Oh, Natalie's, okay, great. Natalie's sent it out to everybody. There it is. Okay. So as part of the grant that we received, we had $75,000 included in there for marketing and publicity that we could be getting informational materials out to the public regarding deadlines, regarding how to apply for mail-in ballots, how to find your polling location, how to register to vote. And the thinking behind this was, and the Elections Office was in support of it, was that it would reduce the amount of people calling in, emailing in, asking for this information. So the more that we could push out there, the better. And so our focus was that we could do a digital and also a print focus. And this would not be the final one that we would be looking at. Again, that we have $75,000 in that budget. But this first agreement would be with the Center Daily Times through McClatchy. They would be able to do both the digital and the print. And the thinking with the print is it's important to get this information out to individuals who are not as tech savvy as some of us and getting them the information in the paper. And again, getting that information elsewhere. There are other entities that cover Center County and have print and digital, even radio that we are looking at and getting quotes from them. So again, we have $75,000 to do that, and this would be the first portion of it. And the total contract is for $24,140. And it would basically be from next week until the election. Again, this is just deadlines. Visit our website, those kinds of things, very basic materials. In addition, if there were any, I'm just giving a little bit more context here for why we're adding it to the agenda. If there was going to be any late-minute changes in the election law, if the courts rule anything, this gives us the opportunity to send them a new ad that they can start running. And again, helps us to not have a flood of calls coming into the office. I just heard this happen. I just heard that happen. The more we can publicize this in a more timely fashion, the better it will be for everybody. So this would just be to add it to the agenda as item B3. And again, we had sent this over, but it was not added to the agenda.
All right, well, I'm happy to make a motion under non-personnel items B3 to add the contract with the Center Daily Times through McClatchy Accelerate to provide video, digital, regular video, social media, and display advertising for the 2020 general election.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Again, we will be voting on this later on the agenda, but this just gets it on the agenda. Any further discussion on adding it to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion. The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, Natalie, and then from that point, we're good on the agendas we have on there currently, correct? And she is texting me saying yes. Okay, thank you very much, Natalie. Okay. All right. We will then go into COVID-19 planning and response. We do have a PPE update. We know that there's been the more recent ones distributed in the county. And we'll see if Jeff Warren is with us online or on the phone. Jeff, are you with us?
I am. We're unable to log into Blue Jeans.
Okay, and we do know that. No, that works, Jeff. Okay, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, all the UCB has been pushed out to the various chambers of commerce and downtown districts. And starting today, it started 9 o'clock this morning, there's a drive-through pickup taking place at the Alpha Fire Station in Patton Township, courtesy of the Center Region EMA Office. And they've been coordinating, working with us, and very helpful. We're still pushing things out to nonprofits, and we're getting some further list together. We've already pushed a lot out. And then also, as you're aware, some of the surges we've had, we're helping out with that. Although for the long-term care facilities, Pima would prefer they get their PPE from the sources that the Department of Health and Department of United Services have, but we're also helping out with that with our CARES Act PPE. And that's really about all we have. Everything's running smoothly, and we're getting it pushed out. And then we still have a reserve supply for the county and to help get through things. And we've also been pushing it out to assist with elections. That's really all we have.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, if you wanted to talk through that, it looked like you also got an update from Pima related to some elections PPE. We did know that we were going to be getting some of that. But if you wouldn't mind just speaking briefly to that, because I think it's important to let everybody know that Pima, the Department of State, and local EMA and Elections Offices are all working together on this.
Yes, sir. So we received an email and a spreadsheet. I did forward that to the Commissioners and Administrator. And there's a supply, it should be en route from the last email we received. And I was going to go check and see if it's arrived. I was not here yesterday, but we'll see when it's going to get here and verify that, and it'll help out with elections, and then we'll cover any shortages there.
Yeah, as we set up the Satellite Elections Office, Jeff has been helpful with getting us any additional masks, face shields, hand sanitizer, wipes, so that we appreciate that, Jeff, very much. Thank you. Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions we wanted to have for Jeff or discuss on PPE?
I'm just glad to hear that it's getting out there and it's being used in the community. I have had some nonprofits and local businesses thank us and acknowledge the Commissioners being very proactive in that area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. All right, thank you again, Jeff, for joining us. We appreciate it. Be safe out there, okay?
Thank you. Have a great day.
Okay, turning things over to county allocation update and turning this over to Margaret. Any updates on that front?
Yes, so under our County Relief Block Grant, one of the buckets of allocation, as you know, is the allocation for Center County Government. And several weeks ago, the Board of Commissioners approved allocations underneath that bucket, so to speak. And there were two items that were tentatively placed on that list while we sought additional guidance from our consultant and our Campbell Durant attorneys about the allowability of two items. One related to the replacement of the Center Hall Tower, and the second related to the Microwave 911 Radio System replacement in the amount of $492,000. As you recall, this is a Microwave Connectivity Component, which is part of our Public Safety Radio System. And upon further review and discussion at length with our ZA Consultant and, as I said, the Campbell Durant Attorney, they believe that this item really did not be reimbursed under the County Relief Block Grant because it is a replacement item not necessarily required or necessitated by the COVID-19 public health pandemic. Their recommendation to us, because this is such an important project, and I think Dale is on the call here. I'm not 100% sure, and he can speak to it in a moment if he's on the call. But their recommendation would be for us to substitute out that line item with salary money that we can claim from our 911 staff, and then use that money for the financing of this Microwave Connectivity Component, which is critical. So we would be asking for permission to take off the line item that says Microwave 911 Radio System in the amount of $492,000 and replace it with claiming the salaries and benefits of our 911 staff, which we are now allowed to do under revised guidance from the United States Department of Treasury. So that's the request, and I don't know, Dale, is Dale on the line?
I'm not seeing him.
I'm thinking that he's not. We could certainly, I know we've talked in other settings about the importance of this system, but he cannot go forward, and we've asked him to hold on any, bringing forward any contracts to you until we know that we have a financing source. And this would be one way to approach it, but it is a not allowable expenditure in the minds of our consultant for CRBG direct financing.
Okay, so essentially, the recommendation is reducing the CARES Act amount to that, using that CARES Act elsewhere, and then basically just using general fund dollars. So at the end of the day, it's the same amount of CARES Act fund being utilized and the same amount of general fund monies being utilized, just in different places.
So there would be no general fund money utilized. We would be reimbursed through the claiming of the salaries, which are already budgeted. We would be able to claim $492,000 by submission of those salaries and benefits. And then you would earmark that money coming in to be used to finance this project. So no general fund dollars.
Okay, and, okay, and no utilization of any 911 Reserve Funds as well?
Correct. Absolutely not.
Okay, okay. So my apologies then. Would we be doing the tower?
Yes, the tower is a separate item, and that's an allowable expenditure under the CRBG grant. So we're good to go there. This is the second separate item.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments on this? Okay, all right. Do we then need to take a motion to, or would you want us to do this at a later date, Margaret? Will we take a motion to amend our plan, that spreadsheet essentially that we had about how we were spending the money?
If there are no other questions and we're clear on what's happening, I think you could take the motion today so that we could give 911 the go-ahead to work on contracts to bring in for your review.
Okay, that sounds great. We then look for a motion to update the county's utilization of CARES Act funds.
Motion to update the county's utilization of CARES Act funds in the 911 Communications Department.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. All right, thank you, Margaret. And then we'll, sure, absolutely. So then we'll then proceed into recipient agreements.
Yes, we have four recipient agreements for your review and consideration this morning. As you know, we enter into recipient agreements with any entity that accepts County Relief Block Grant allocations from the county, and those recipient agreements lay out all of the terms and conditions under which the CRBG monies can be spent. So we have two recipient agreements from municipalities this morning, one from Potter Township and the second from Snowshoe Township. And we have two recipient agreements from educational entities, one assigned agreement from Penn State and one from the Phillipsburg-Osiola School District. And then once these recipient agreements are approved, then those entities can submit receipts to our controller for review and payment.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Any questions on the municipality items? All right, hearing none, we look for a motion for the recipient agreements from the municipalities.
Motion to approve the recipient agreements from municipalities.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, and then we look for a motion for the educational entities.
Motion to approve the recipient agreements from educational entity.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. The motion is carried. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Margaret.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to head into personnel items. Our first few are for elections. We have a total of 12, and they consist of the approval of an amended appointment for Jessica Lawson as temporary intern. And Jessica will actually be, the way that we had structured this was her first start date wouldn't be until later in October. But in actuality, what had happened was she actually would be able to start earlier. And so we'd be doing this retro to the 5th. And we have Jessica to thank for working with us on many of the things with the Bryce Jordan Center and some other items. We also then would have the appointment of several individuals at the Satellite Election Site. Also, Laura Brown would be, we'd be appointing her a temporary part-time Satellite Voting Center worker, but in actuality, she'll be mostly based out of the Willabang Building. She's been doing a terrific job playing defense on the phones and helping us to answer the phones when they come in. And that allows the staff in the Elections Office to focus on their work. And so they've really been grateful and thankful for having Laura there, so we would be doing that as well. And then lastly, let's see here. We just would have the personnel requisitions as well. So happy to answer any questions on those 12 items, comments, feedback, but if not, we look for a motion for those 12. Okay, all right, we look for a motion then for those 12 items.
Motion to approve the 12 items for the Elections Department.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. We do have a consideration of the approval, the appointment for Rachel Lyons, full-time public safety telecommunicator in the Emergency Communications Office. And we would be looking to appoint her effective October 19th. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion to approve the appointment for Rachel Lyons, full-time public safety telecommunications.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you for the motion and the second. All those in favor of doing so, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you. All right, we just want to note that the Sheriff has approved the personal requisition for a full-time Deputy Sheriff, too, in his office. Into the non-personnel items, we are going to turn this item over to Margaret, and this is a follow-up conversation from our discussion on Tuesday regarding the Court System 1 Sound System. Margaret?
Yes, thanks very much. This Commissioner Pike said this item was tabled at Tuesday's Board of Commissioners meeting due to some additional questions. Our first question had to do with bidding and the need for an RFP, and then subsequently, a question about whether this is a completely new system or if we are able to use existing components of the sound system in courtroom one. So the answer regarding bidding is that, in fact, JP Lilly is a CoStarz vendor, and therefore, we are able to contact, contract with them directly without a formal bidding process. And secondly, and I'm going to turn this over to Chad and also to Kendra in a minute, but we did go back through the proposal, and the system, in fact, does have many different components. And some of the components are still in place and will be used. So this is a way to make the system run smoothly, but it's not a total and complete replacement. And going back through the purchase orders, we discovered that the most recent purchase order for this was not pulled. And the actual amount is, instead of $36,463, the actual amount is less than that. It's $29,439. So I wanted to point that out as well. So it is actually more than was budgeted. We budgeted $17,000 for this project. It is more than that, but less than what was originally presented on Tuesday. So I'm going to turn it over to Chad. He talked further with the JP Lilly folks and can explain exactly what parts of the system are remaining and what parts need to be upgraded. Chad, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good morning. Yes, I talked to JP Lilly and reviewed each line item on the quote, getting further detail on what's going to stay and what's going to be replaced. So the items that are going to stay in place are the microphones, the equipment rack, which houses the speaker systems and the other system, our assistive listening technology system, and the court reporter system. Those will all remain in place. The new items that will come in are new speakers and a new digital sound processor mixer, which the current items just do not work anymore. And Kendra, if you want to kind of elaborate more on the project itself?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So the system that we have in courtroom one, I believe, is from the 80s. The system has been patched. We've been doing a lot of patchwork on it, I think, to try to avoid having to put this amount of money into a system. But we actually are now to the point where it does not work. We rented a system for the recent trials that we started. We had to move some things around because of COVID. We're now spacing the jurors out more within the courtroom. We need to make sure we have a sound system that works. We did have to go out and rent a system that was costing probably around $2,000, and that was just being used for a two-week period. We have trials that are starting again November, and will run until probably the beginning of February that depending on being able to get a new system or not, we'll have to use again to rent. So I guess my concern is renting, continuing to rent equipment to make sure that the jurors can hear and the people testifying, their testimony can be heard. It would probably, in my view, be better to be able to get a system in there instead of renting equipment that, at the end of the day, we have nothing to show for it. I mean, it's kind of across the board over here. Courtroom one, I mean, courtroom two is in the same condition. This quote is for courtroom one at this point, but we are in dire need of a appropriately working sound system in the courtrooms.
Oh, I don't know if there are additional questions, anything further that we can provide to offer explanation. We have identified funding within the Court Administration budget for the shortfall between the cost of $29,439 and the budgeted amount of $17. So there is funding with some budget revisions to the Court Administrator's office.
I have no other question. I think it's a necessary thing to do, and it should last as many years into the future. And it's, yeah, I think it's a need to do. So that's my take, but any other perspectives or thoughts on that?
No, just really sounds like the current system is shot. Things were out. You need to replace them.
I would agree.
Do we have any other curiosity before we look for a motion on this? Final motion. Margaret, we did have it, and you may have said it, and we might have missed it, but this was more related to the, we had a question about bidding. Does it need to be bid? It does not, correct?
It does not, because JP Lilly is a CoStarz vendor, and we verify that. We have their number and so forth. Just so you know, we, and Chad could speak to this if you're interested, but Pike County recently used JP Lilly for an upgrade to the Pike County courtroom, and they're very pleased with the results of the sound system. So we've also been able to talk to others who have used the product.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts, before we look for a motion? And if there's are none, we can take a motion. Okay, hearing none.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposal from JP Lilly, Inc. to install a sound system in courtroom one. The total cost is $29,439.
Correct.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
As part of our, as part of our event, I should say, polling location change in Precinct 41 that we took action on at the Elections Board Meeting on Tuesday, the 6th, we would be doing an event agreement with the Nittany Mall for the use of the space there. Our solicitor has reviewed it. She had some minor changes, and they essentially relate to the length of time that the date could be amended or changed. It currently reads as one day up until the day before the election. The Nittany Mall could say, we're going, or we could say, we're not going to use it. Betsy's just saying, let's take that out for 15 days. And also, and we just got the changes this morning, so we haven't gotten back from the Nittany Mall if they're okay with this. But there's a second one about a, let me see here what it is. It's related to our insurance essentially, and it would be a, pulling up the copy here, subrogation language, and so we just need to have that finalized. So essentially, I couldn't foresee there being an issue. The mall's been great to work with, with the senior center, the testing site, you know, all the things we've been doing with them. And so if we could do a motion contingent upon solicitors' approval of this agreement, I think that would be wise and proper. And so if there's any questions on that beforehand, we can answer them, but if not, we can go ahead with that motion. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve the event agreement with the Nittany Mall for the use of Space E18 from November 1st through November 4th as Precinct 41 College North.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Next on the agenda is an item for, it's a quotation from Johnson Controls Security Solutions LLC to supply and install an electronic video surveillance equipment for the secure ballot drop box at the Hub Robison Center at Penn State. And the total quotation is $4,149, and we'd be looking to approve this. And essentially, we've been working with the university for the last several weeks in finalizing the security, the installation, and then the data component for getting a drop box up there. Our target is to have a drop box go live there on Monday, the 19th. But in order for us to do that, we have a drop box go live there on Monday, the 19th. But in order for us to do that, we, we would need to install a camera of our own at the site, and, uh, Penn State uses Johnson's controls for installation in, in some of these, uh, manners. But we are then going to be working with the IT folks, OPP, whomever. They're gonna be doing a data run and a power run for us, uh, there, and, uh, and, and this as well. They're gonna be working with Johnson Controls to get this set up. Uh, and so essentially, that would, and again, th- these funds, we had anticipated there would be security installations that we would need to have happen. So, uh, we've been, we're gonna be paying for Spring Township Security Camera. We paid for one at the Phillipsburg MDJ Office as well, out of the grant. Excuse, an additional one there, and then we're also gonna be doing this one at the Hub. And then for future elections and drop boxes, this would be in place, so the cost would not be there. Uh, so Chad's on the line if we had any technical questions, uh, but essentially, that's what we, we would be looking for. Okay, all right. Hearing no, no questions. Would the, there be a motion to approve, uh, the, or, uh, the, the quotation from Johnson Controls?
Motion to approve the quotation from Johnson Controls Security Solutions LLC.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion is carried. Okay. Lastly, for elections, this is the item that we had added earlier in the agenda. Again, it's a contract with the Senator Daily Times through McClatchy Accelerate, which is their advertising and, uh, marketing, uh, component to provide, again, digital and, and tr- and traditional print advertising. Uh, they will be developing the copy. Uh, we will have final approval. It will then, uh, go to print or digital. Again, the digital, if we need to change anything, is, is, is a lot easier to do. If we have the print, there is a few more dates for that. So really, in the print, we're really doing the things that we know are hard and true. Deadline to register, the elec- the Elections Website of how to do that, uh, the deadline for returning, uh, or I'm sorry, applying for a mail-in ballot, how to apply for that. Also, the deadline to return the ballots, and also the deadline to, or I should say, information about how to vote and where to vote. We wanna make sure that we have been promoting the, the vote by mail, but after, uh, uh, you know, after the 27th, you can't request one. And even before that, we will be promoting, find out your polling location. Uh, we have obviously have changed some, some due to, due to the pandemic. We are not consolidating any, which is great for the general. We have all, uh, 80 site set up, which is great. Uh, we obviously will already be doing, and I think it's almost a full or half-page ad that we do independent of this per election code, where we'll be publishing a list of all of the precincts in, uh, paper of record for the county. So that occurs anyway, but again, this is just gonna help to inform our voters. In addition, take some of the pressure off of folks, uh, at the, uh, Elections Office for answering any questions. Uh, so, um, uh, at an upcoming Elections Board Meeting, we can say next Tuesday, I could, uh, I could show you some of the ads that they're coming up with. It's very basic. It's literally just an image of a vote, vote sign, um, and then the regis- the dates, regis- the deadline to register is October 19th. Go to this website. I mean, that's how simple it is. Nothing, nothing fancy. Um, so happy to answer any questions on this, discuss it further. Um, um, get any feedback, and again, we can make sure that we're talking about this at the Elections Board Meeting on Tuesday. Okay. All right. Uh, we look for a motion then to approve the agreement with, uh, the Senator Daily Times.
Motion to approve the contract with the Senator Daily Times through McClatchy Accelerate to provide digital video, video, social media, and display advertising for the 2020 general election.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Lastly, we're going to be moving into our, um, any discussion items? Um, anything else that we needed to discuss today? Uh, uh, anything else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, any executive sessions to report, Margaret?
No executive sessions to report.
Okay. Uh, we have any questions from the press at this time before we look to adjourn? Any questions at this time from anybody? Okay. Uh, hearing none, we look for a motion to adjourn at 10:44.
Motion to adjourn at 10:44.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice day.